Thank you, Vice President Schlatter. We are excited to do this recognition tonight. This recognition tonight is for members of our NACs Food Service team. This summer, our own NACs Food Service entered the JTM Food Group K-12 Crave Competition with a dish they created on a professional development day last February. They made the top four out of over 500 dishes to compete then as a national finalist. And they were awarded, well, they made the top four out of 500 dishes at that competition in San Antonio, Texas. The team was comprised of staff from both Carroll High School and Cedar Canyon Elementary School. We do have a link that I think was included in the board agenda. And then also would like to recognize, do we have that link ready to play or was it just included? Mrs. Valdez back there? Oh, I'm sorry. It was just included on the agenda so anyone can see that. And I think it's been shared and it's pretty awesome. But members of that team tonight that are with us are Laura John. And invite you to come up, meet members of the board to accept a certificate and we'll take a photo up here as well. Marcia Schaumberg. Kim Tran. Annie Truong. And Jody Richardson. We also have many other Food Service employees here from different buildings and also in district leadership. And we thank you for being here to support your colleagues and the work that you do, all of you do in our schools. We certainly appreciate it.
I'd like to share a special announcement and thank you for our entire NACs Nutrition Services team. A special thank you with Mrs. Keenan and that entire Nutrition Service team. I wanted to share that in our 2024-2025 school year, they served 1,072,41 lunches and 1,074,118 breakfasts. Our Nutrition Services team currently has 83 staff who work a total of 419 hours each day of the week to feed our
NACs can become an even better place for the community to send their children. We thank you for your commitment to Northwest Allen County Schools.
Porandi Lemming.
Good evening. I'd like to speak in support of the operating referendum. Northwest Allen receives about $500 less per student than the state average, yet continues to provide safe schools, strong academics, and dedicated teachers. This referendum would help us maintain the quality of the community expects from our district. The key part of the referendum is the CTE building, which will provide labs, equipment, classrooms, giving students real-world learning opportunities. These programs help students develop career opportunities, explore their interests, prepare for college. Strong schools do more than educate. They support property values, they attract families, and strengthen our community. Research shows that every dollar invested in schools can raise local property values many times over. Supporting this referendum isn't about spending more, it's about protecting what works and preparing for what's next. Quality education today builds capable citizens, a stronger workforce, and a stable community tomorrow. So while others may focus only on short-term costs, I see this as a long-term investment, a steady, responsible choice to maintain excellence and to cure the future for NACs families. Thank you.
Julie Nicholson.
Hi, my name is Julie Nicholson. I live in Pine Valley. I am also in support of our referendum. I believe that, and it sounds cliche, but I believe that strong schools make for strong communities. I think the vote is beyond taxes. I think the vote is about making sure kids are safe, that we're able to attract and retain quality teachers, and make sure that all of our kids have access to the tools that they need to succeed. I do believe it's an investment in a future. I believe it'll strengthen our property values, strengthen local pride, and make it a school district that we can continue to be proud of. Thank you.
Kent Summers.
Hello, Kent Summers. Thornapple Co., Fort Wayne, 468445. I'm here to talk about the referendum, but it's not for against in the sense of some key pieces I think are still missing. I do want to appreciate, I do agree that we get less money, poor student, for the education. This is an education issue. 10 million of your 12 million are education fund-based issues, yet I saw no campaign or have we had no community campaign to bring this awareness to our legislators? If you all remember when the city of Fort Wayne tried to encroach upon our community in annexed NACs, a large section of NACs, the community came together and contacted their local legislators at the city council and everywhere, including our state legislators came to support our deeds. We also went through and decided if this did come through, what were we going to do? And we didn't turn around and offer a operating referendum or operations referendum. We went out and said, we're going to cut certain services because we were going to live within our means at the time. If you remember right, we were going to cut transportation. We'd cut all the salaries into the buses because we couldn't come up with enough money to continue those services. So this is not, this is an education fund issue, not an operations fund issue. I think this is getting conflated. I give the school, Ms. Valdez, you've done a great job because you've shown the before, after, and then the net growth. That's important because I think sometimes that gets convoluted. But we have a structural problem here in the NACs community. We have three tax-exempt entities with over $460 million of NAV, which we're collecting no income. That's $4 million of revenue. $4 million pays for your CTE building, your CTE and one of your other initiatives. Take it further, if you go back, I know we're eighty-some percent, eighty-seven percent residential from the policy analytics. Rest is retail, our business retail, commercial. How much of that commercial and apartments are sitting in TIF regions? If you look at the 2024 TIF report from, out from the LG, let's see, Local Government Finance, local, whatever, LGD, you know what it is, Brandon.
LDGF.
Thank you, LDGF. We basically foregone about $600,000 last year. And if you look at the corridor, the Lima Corridor, where we have a new medical service and we have a new Starbucks, gas station, Dairy Queen, we have a new winery, a new apartment complex, a new apartment complex off of Tonka Road. Every one of those are in a TIF region, which means NACs will only collect the revenue for the school based upon its assessed value at the base lock-in, which is a field. So I calculated quickly based upon their Form 11s, another $600,000 to $800,000 per annum we're not collecting for the schools. If you take my $4 million, you're another almost 1.5 million, there's five and a half million. We haven't shaken the trees before we go to the taxpayers. I just want to bring that to your attention. And then finally, again, the maximum levy growth quotient. We've challenged that for years and I still don't understand why we can't get legislators to understand that growing communities have this problem. When we have fields turned into subdivisions and houses, our net assessed value will grow naturally. It's an organic growth. It's not just because we're trying to raise money, we're literally have natural growth. That should be excluded from that formula. I don't know what it takes. Again, a campaign by the whole community with state and local legislators are important. We can't have our commissioners continuing to allow more and more development here if we're not going to be able to collect the tax revenue off of that. That's a problem we have here. And then finally, total compensation is where I come back and discuss this before. Want to raise in salaries? NACs pays 90% of the insurance for its teachers and employees. Schools like Zionsville, Noblesville, they pay 71%. Put it together, that's about a $5,000 increase in salary if you want to do it that way. Again, we offer a lot of total return benefits that aren't included just in salary. Thank you.
Mark Bloom.
Good evening. My name is Mark Bloom and I live in Holly Oak, off of Holly Oak Road in Oak Crossing. I don't have any children in NACs, but I will admit that I have a wife that works for NACs. And I'm very proud that she works for NACs. But I'll be honest with you, the only reason why she can work for NACs is because of the money that I make. If I didn't have the salary that I had, she would not work for NACs. And the truth of the matter is, as a community, if we are truly committed to ensuring a high-quality we must be committed to ensuring that not only our teachers, but all staff members are paid a living wage. Right now, we have employees in NACs with the money that they earn, if they were single parents with two children, would fall under the poverty guidelines. That's shocking. And right now, I imagine some of you are out there thinking, what jobs might those be? Those jobs include people who have to have a college degree. It includes my wife. Okay? She's a nurse. Our NACs nurses with two children, if they're single, are making poverty-level wages. It's not acceptable for us to be providing that for our people. It's not acceptable. For nurses, it's not bloody noses and broken bones. It's life and death. On a March day in 2021, a young girl came into my wife's clinic with a major headache. And that headache got worse. And within five minutes, my wife summoned an EMS and put into play the events that saved that little girl's life. That girl had an aneurysm. But from my wife's experience and understanding what was going on, that little girl probably would not be here today. So when we talk about a living wage, when we talk about this referendum, it is the teachers, but it's all of our staff members. It's all of the people that touch our children. That, that is why this referendum is so important. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Jim Walker.
Hello, my name is Jim Walker. I live in Oak Blen. I'm also a teacher at the school district. I've been here for 19 years and I've also been pretty involved in contract negotiations and the teaching association and just the interworkings of the entire school district pretty much the whole time I've been here. I mean, I would probably say the last 15 years. I do want to say that I'm incredibly proud of everything that our community has built together in this school system. We have a great system, great people, great families. And when I say community, I mean everybody. It's not just the employees of Northwest Allen County Schools. It's the families that we serve, the students, the business leaders in our community, residents that attend our football games. And we just have a really great thing going here. And let's see, two minutes is not that long. I had something much longer, so now I got to improv. Okay, so I've always appreciated in working with the contract situation, the professional respect that the district-level administration has had in interacting with the teachers. Communication is open, it's honest. I've heard comments that, you know, we can fix our school funding because we have too many administrators and we need to reprioritize dollars towards students and teachers. And I 100% know that is not true because I do have a deep understanding of the school finances. The fact of the matter is, we are underfunded. It's been clearly illustrated, we receive $8 million less than the average school system in our district. And I know people want to propose alternatives and we want to wait for politicians to solve our problems, but we have been waiting for politicians to try to solve the school funding problems for 15 years, ever since in 2010, we capped our property taxes. And now we're looking at Senate Bill One, which is going to further reduce our school funding. And our kids cannot just wait around for politicians to try to solve our problem. I have faith, the great community that we're part of will all come together and we will support our students. And in doing so, we're supporting our collective future because our success in the future is dependent on our students' success. Thank you for your time. I have a lot more details. If any community member would like to sit down and discuss the referendum, I am more than happy to do so. Thank you.
Before moving on to the consent agenda, I wanted to mention that, Mrs. Valdez, if you could make a note that Mrs. Jameson will be joining us as soon as she can. She's currently with one of her children at a school concert and event tonight, so she may be coming in here shortly, I would believe. Moving on on our agenda, item number seven is our consent agenda. It's recommended that the minutes of the September 22nd, 2025 executive session and regular board meeting of school trustees be approved as presented. Item 7.2, approval of claims and payroll. It's recommended that the claims and payroll, subject to audit, be approved as presented. Item 7.3, approval of grants and donations. It's recommended that the grants and donations be approved as presented. Item 7.4, approval of field trips. It is recommended that the field trip requests be approved as presented. And item 7.5, it's recommended that the items in the consent agenda, 7.1, 7.2, and 7.3 be approved as presented. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number eight, our superintendent report with Superintendent Barker.
Thank you, Vice President Schlatter. I tonight want to make another presentation. A lot of the information, quite honestly, is going to be a review for those of you that have followed what's been happening here really since last June of 2024. We started a plan in June of 2024 that we have called NACs, the Next Decade, Planning for Continued Excellence. And over that time, we've talked about curriculum issues, instructional issues, a lot of things of dreaming and planning for the future of what Northwest Allen County Schools could look like. And certainly, this operating referendum has been a big part of that over that time, really now for the last 17 months or so. What's not seen is the work of really this team with our other staff to really get prepared to start talking about it even over the years and time prior to that. The agenda that you have that's online, it shows pages and pages of activity that has happened in our school board meetings from June of 2024 through today. I'm not going to go through all of that, but there are many, many presentations there. And I think our team has done our best to try to be very open and honest about where we are and where we think we can go. So, Mr. Dale, if you could give us, oh, I have it. So tonight, many times since that discussion, we've talked about the funding challenges. You've heard it from different people tonight already in different presentations. And tonight, and I'm going to refer a lot of the information back to that one-pager that we have used many, many times. This is a screenshot cut out of that one-pager. This specifically is talking about operational dollars. The education fund, we really don't have control over. They count the number of students we have and we receive money in state tuition support based upon that. The operations dollars are what is collected through property taxes. Going to go through this slide, looking at the left column of the slide, you see just general property tax dollars per student that are collected. I want you to draw your attention to the first yellow line, that is the Northwest Allen County Schools line. We, and this information was given to us from policy analytics, and basically, our number of property tax dollars per student is $1,414. I certainly understand from a taxpayer perspective that they can articulate that their tax bills have grown. I'm sensitive to the fact that they have grown and I understand that does cause a burden for some. In my role as superintendent, I'm charged with trying to lead the district to do our best for the children that are here. And I also want to be able to balance that for our community. But I have to say, when I look at this number of property taxes that we're actually collecting per student, we are significantly underfunded then when you make that comparison to other districts. The state average is $1,963. So nearly 500, over $500, nearly $550 in underfunding just to be average. And we know many people are choosing to move out here and no one comes out here and says, we wanted to come here because your schools are average. People are coming here, not even that we're above average, we're elite. This is an elite school district and people are choosing to come to us for that reason. But yet, we're expected to provide those services, those elite services with well-below-average funding. So when you look at that in comparison to other districts, we'll first start with just our county school districts. You'll see the closest one to us is Southwest Allen County Schools at 1,928. So they are over $500 per student. Multiply that out times the 8,300-ish students that we have, that's a big number just in the property tax dollars that we collect. East Allen is close to them at 1,934. And then you see Fort Wayne Community at 2,193. We selected some peer districts there, Noblesville, Westfield, and Carmel Clay. And you can see those districts more like us, but also other than Noblesville, all receiving more dollars in their property tax general collections. However, when you add in operating referendums, and you can see here that East Allen does not have one, you can see that Northwest Allen County does not have one, Fort Wayne Community does not. But when you start adding in those numbers, and those are numbers that those districts are collecting, you see that Noblesville goes up to $3,403 compared to our 1,0414. Westfield, 2,0638. Carmel Clay, 3,0639. six, uh, three thousand six hundred and thirteen. Uh, Southwest Allen County, two thousand eight ninety-three. East Allen does not have one. The state average of those that then have the operating referendum of three thousand five hundred and fifty-five. So you can see when you compare that far right column, uh, first of all, it's not good on the far left column. But when we compare it to the far right column, uh, those operations, uh, funds look drastically different than what we can do. Uh, that impacts everything we do. Uh, I've heard a lot, uh, over the last, uh, couple weeks especially about, um, you know, this is a, a live within your means, uh, thing and we just need to figure it out. And I would commend this district for many, many years on doing just that. We have done that, um, but we've done that really because of the fact that we have incredible students that we serve and we have an incredible staff that serves them. That's why, um, we can do better and we need to do better, in my opinion. Next, I'm gonna provide an overview of how we intend to spend that operating revenue if the community passes it, uh, in the upcoming election on November fourth. Uh, before I do that, I wanted to make sure I mentioned that we did a strategic planning process back in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Um, we received ba- feedback from nearly six thousand five hundred responses, uh, from our community to the survey that we, we put out and they were very willing to give us their opinions about what they wanted out of Northwest Allen County Schools. And quite honestly, that strategic planning process started us into the next phase of, uh, the neck, the next decade planning initiative that we have. Uh, additionally, we had a community-based steering team of, uh, and ninety-one people participated in that. Uh, those were people that were selected by board members and other people and we're thankful for them. And we also had a community-based steering team that led that work. Much of what you're going to see in this operating referendum in terms of, uh, what we're, what we have dreamed out comes as a direct, uh, reaction to what is in the strategic plan. Uh, so, uh, I know that's probably difficult for you to see. Again, that is on the one pager. It's the left side of the one pager, if you've seen that before. But I'm just kinda gonna go through that. Uh, the funding needed for recruitment and retention of a- all employees, and that has been stressed tonight. Uh, we'll continue to stress that ourselves. Uh, and I just say this is essential to making NACS, uh, competitive. This will improve our retention rates. It's gonna stabilize our workforce uh, against the recruitment from higher paying, uh, surrounding districts. Uh, five point one million dollars is allocated from the operating referendum. Um, uh, that will increase. We can talk about the teacher salaries specifically because we have reached a tentative agreement with the teachers and the board is aware of that. Uh, and we know that that's going to be a three thousand dollar increase, uh, to teachers. That would also increase our, uh, minimum salary to that fifty thousand dollar amount. Uh, while I can't say specifically what it would mean for those work groups until we have those discussions with the board, I can say, uh, unequivocally that this will mean a raise for every employee and work group that we have. Uh, those, those amounts could look different. We've done a lot of work to compare work groups to, uh, state averages and county averages and different work groups. So it will, it could look different, but it will be, uh, our intention that every, every work group, every employee see, um, uh, an increase in pay. Uh, funding needed for instructional support, that's the, the bottom, the left side there. Uh, this, we have two point seven million dollars allocated, uh, to add teachers to increase curricular offerings for students. Uh, for example, we want to add eight science, technology, engineering, and mathematics teachers, uh, STEM for our elementary schools. We currently only offer four related arts classes at our elementary school. Um, very honestly, I know of no other school district that, uh, doesn't offer at least five related arts courses. Um, so we need to expand that curriculum, uh, to provide our students with a broader, um, curriculum and a broader experience. We also want to add four high ability teachers. Uh, this will obviously increase the rigor uh, and provide extra challenges for students who are, um, ready for those. We want to add two English lan- language art learner teachers. You know, this program started, uh, nearly ten years ago with about sixty students and now we're currently over three hundred students. We need more people to serve those students. And then finally, we need to add instructional assistant positions and include increasing the hours of people who are working on literacy in our schools, uh, to support teachers and students. Uh, we've talked a lot about the funding needed for the career and technical ed alternative education staff. Um, one of the specific goals that came out of the strategic plan was that families told us they wanted personalized, hands-on learning experiences, specifically in the area of vocational education. Uh, as a result, uh, the Board of School Trustees, uh, approved a project to build a new CTE facility, uh, to be constructed on the Carroll High School campus. We are nearly finished with that design and hope to break ground on that project in late February or early March, depending on the weather. Uh, however, it's important to note that that project cannot go forward without the successful passage of the operating referendum. We cannot add more operating expenses to our operations fund knowing that, um, we're gonna, uh, not have the operations dollars to do that because we have currently allocated two point two million dollars, uh, to, to cover the cost of the fifteen new career tech ed teachers, four instructional assistants, a guidance counselor, a work-based learning counselor, a director, a treasurer, and the code custodial staff that would be required for that building. Uh, the next item, funding needed for safety and wellbeing. We currently have four school resource officers, uh, that serve our entire district. Uh, we're thankful for them. They do a great job for us, um, serving and, and keeping everyone safe here. To meet the, the minimum number of, uh, school resource officers that we are recommended to have for a school district our size, we need to add four additional SROs. Um, so that is a big part of, uh, trying to add to the safety and wellbeing. Additionally, we want to add one safety specialist, three social workers. We want to increase the hours of our nurses. Uh, currently, we struggle to make sure we're covering even the school day with the nursing hours that we have. Uh, and finally, we want to move our elementary school deans' positions to assistant principal positions. And again, this is very common in most every other district that those are assistant principal positions to support, uh, all of the administrative duties, um, supporting special education, supporting teacher evaluation, supporting the principal. So we have one point three million dollars allocated from the operating referendum to cover those added expenses for safety and wellbeing. And then finally, the, the category we've called funding needed for district staffing. Quite honestly, it probably would have been better for us to call this miscellaneous staffing. Uh, this, um, will enable us to increase office coverage in the building and more administrative, uh, s- uh, support. And I, by that, I mean administrative assistant support in buildings. Uh, adding a grants coordinator, as most districts our size would have, to try to be able to pursue those grants that are out there. Adding a director of facilities, uh, adding other district maintenance staff. And again, I, I know districts with five hundred students total who have a maintenance staff. And we, we do not have one with as many buildings and serving, um, the boundaries that we have here. So, uh, sa- having said all that, that's, uh, about eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars allocated from the operating referendum for those positions. So as you can see, nearly, uh, all of the money that's planned out of this operating referendum is earmarked for the current and future employees who are gonna be serving students. Um, this is about, uh, improving the lives of students and we do that through the people that are serving them by offering the programs that they want. And finally, I want to reiterate a point that's been made in past board meetings. Uh, we only intend to take out in the first year up to that ten million dollars amount in the first year of the operating referendum. That is due to the fact that the CTE facility will not be, uh, ready to open, uh, until the fall of twenty-seven. So we will not have the added expenses of that facility. Um, so we would, we don't need to take out that full amount. That's nearly a seventeen percent reduction in the operating referendum, which will have an impact on the property tax calculator, uh, when people go to that because it's going to show us taking out that full amount. And I, I'm not trying to use that as, as, uh, leverage. I just want people to understand the first year impact will be less to taxpayers than what it does show on there. Next, I want to, um, talk about and give voters an idea of what to expect when they go into the ballot box. Um, the question will be the only question on the ballot for voters to consider. Uh, and I'm just going to read that question. Shall Northwest Allen County Schools increase property taxes paid to the school corporation for no more than eight years for the purpose of funding educational instruction and staffing at a career and technical education facility, retention and attraction of teachers, support staff and administrators, school safety and wellbeing staffing and initiatives, instructional support staffing at all buildings, and district-wide staffing by imposing a property tax rate that does not exceed point two seven eight seven? Uh, so that is basically nearly twenty-eight cents and results in a maximum annual amount that does not exceed twelve million, one hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars. If this operating, um, referendum public question is approved by the voters, uh, for a median residence of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the property's annual tax bill would increase by five hundred and five dollars. So that is the question that people will see when they go into the ballot box. That will be the question that they will vote yes or no to, and that will be the only question. And only people really in our school district are, are going to have an election. Um, so as, as you can see, the question shows the intention of how the district will spend the money as I really just kind of spent quite a lot of time, uh, talking about in the previous slide. Additionally, it shows the impact, uh, to the median-priced home, uh, being five hundred and five dollars for the three hundred and fifty thousand. Um, and again, that will actually be over what it will co- what, what, would it will be charged to those families, to those taxpayers in the first year because of actually only taking out the ten million. Next, I wanna go to the property tax calculator. Uh, this is an example of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There's been some discussion about that. For the purposes of this example tonight, um, we've chosen Perry Township. Uh, we have a lot of our population living in Perry Township. So that is the, um, green box on the left side of that near the top. You can see Perry Township there. Um, additionally, we're using that three hundred and fifty thousand median-priced home and you can see that, uh, being, uh, on the second, uh, box there on the left. Uh, now let's take a look at what happens in the calculations for that. So I want to draw your attention to the middle of the right column that shows an annual tax bill. Uh, you can see that the annual tax bill for twenty twenty-five for this, um, home would be two thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-six cents. Um, the annual tax bill for twenty twenty-six in the next column would be two thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-eight cents. The reason for this is there is a reduction caused by the actions of the Indiana legislators in the last session, uh, in passing Senate Enrolled Act One. Um, so they have, uh, made provision for property tax bills to go down, uh, starting next year. So if nothing happens, um, to, um, the property tax bills, if the operating referendum does not pass, someone in this home would see a reduction to their tax bill of three hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents. So if you look at the line titled annual referendum, uh, tax bill, which is the second green box on the right, uh, you'll see that it shows zero for twenty-five because we do not have an operating referendum and it shows five hundred and five dollars for twenty twenty-six. Uh, this again is the same number shown on the ballot that we just talked about. Uh, and it's what voters will see then on November fourth. Uh, finally, if we look at the annual tax bill, which is the bottom right green box, uh, you'll see that the annual tax bill for twenty twenty-five is that twenty-six seventy-two amount. The, uh, amount due in twenty twenty-six, if the operating referendum is passed, is twenty-eight twenty-four. So the annual tax bill, if the operating referendum goes up or is, is approved, the annual tax bill would go up by one hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-three cents. There's confusion about that and I don't want us to, um, I want us to, to be able to have a conversation about that. The, the property tax impact is five hundred and five dollars. But the Senate Enrolled Act One deduction is an amount of three hundred and fifty-three dollars. Adding in that cost to the operating referendum, subtracting the, the, uh, Senate Enrolled Act One deduction, uh, creates an impact for that property taxpayer of one hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-three cents. Not going to tell property taxpayers how to make that decision or how to evaluate that. Um, we are owning the fact that, um, the increase for the operating referendum is five hundred and five dollars. But some people are asking how much is, what's gonna happen to my bill? Um, and, and many people have their property taxes figured in their bill. So this shows both. People can look at it. However, it makes most sense to them. Um, and if they do have it included in their, their monthly bill, um, they're going to see an increase to, to their monthly payment of twelve dollars and sixty-four cents for that. Um, but again, the cost of the referendum to that person is five hundred and five dollars. Uh, but I, we want to be clear about all of those numbers because all of those things are true. So in the next slide, uh, you see the QR, uh, codes. Uh, the top QR code will take you to our district website for the operating referendum information. We have a lot of information there. Um, and then the, um, bottom code will take you to the property tax calculator. Uh, finally, for me personally, it, it's just very important, uh, that this operating referendum passes. I, you know, I wanna be clear about that. From my standpoint as the superintendent, for all the reasons I've outlined in this presentation, um, this plan is directly aligned with our strategic plan, which is built on community input. Uh, and I truly believe it allows us to better serve students. Uh, that said, I want to emphasize something that I've shared in earlier meetings. Uh, this should not be a divisive issue, issue in our, our community. My goal is simply to ensure that people understand the facts and vote according to their values. Um, this referendum has been placed on the ballot through a democratic process so that our community can decide, uh, what direction we want to take together. Regardless of the outcome, our schools will continue to serve our students uh, and community with the same commitment and care we've always had. Uh, it will, uh, it will possi- it will definitely look different depending on the result, but our focus won't change. Uh, so I, I say that to everyone. I, I want people to make sure that, uh, if we're communicating or they have questions about the facts, that they reach out and talk to us, uh, about the facts of what this means for students, what it means for the community. Uh, but at the end of the day, I think people should be able to vote, you know, in, in the ways that are in accordance with what is important to them. Uh, and I don't begrudge anyone for doing that. Um, so, uh, that's all I have tonight in the superintendent's report. I know that was kind of a long report, but, um, I'm open, I'm open for any questions you might have or comments.
Mr. Barker, I was gonna ask if you could help clarify, um, one of the details that really stood out to me and, um, one of the comments you'd made, I believe, earlier this week was with our SROs. And when we talk about the safety of our kids, can you help, um, refresh my memory about the number of kids on average approximately that our SROs are responsible for versus where that typically would stand and where we would hope to be?
Yes, we, we currently have four school resource officers. Um, uh, predominantly there, we have two at the high school and we have, uh, one each at our middle schools. Uh, when needed, uh, those school resource officers also support the elementary schools. Uh, so we currently have four school resource officers for over eight thousand three hundred students. Uh, it suggested that the, the minimum number that they should support is one thousand students. So we, we have a need for four additional school resource officers, uh, that, uh, should the operating referendum pass, then we'll have to quickly work with our Allen County Sheriff's Department then to make that happen. But that is a big component of this school safety, certainly.
I have a question. Um, earlier today, we visited Aspen Meadow Elementary and, um, some of the teachers were saying that there were thirty students in the classroom. With this operating referendum, um, are we hoping that the class sizes can be decreased? Or how does that work into it, if it does?
Um, I'm, I'm not aware of any classes currently that are at thirty.
Okay.
But with the funding that we currently have, But with the funding that we currently have and the impact coming from Senate Enrolled Act One is not something that we'll be able to maintain. I think class sizes will go up if the operating referendum doesn't pass. I can't say for certain how much. Certainly, some of what we will use the operating referendum to do as we build this thing out is to make sure we can adjust to what the impacts of Senate Enrolled Act One are. Without that increased revenue, we'll not have the ability to do that, and very likely then the school class sizes will go up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Barker. I appreciate that. We will move on to item number nine, our personnel report with Mr. DiPremio.
Thank you, Vice President Schlotter. As indicated, I'll be referencing the Personnel section of your packet. Everything appears to be straightforward this evening. Recommended highlights for this evening's meeting include four certified recommendations, 12 classified positions. It is recommended that items 9.1 through 9.9 in the Personnel Report be approved as presented.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I do, I want to take a moment. I'd be remiss, Mr. DiPremio, if I didn't share with you, congratulations on your retirement, official retirement, and we've been really blessed, and I want to thank you for your time and your dedication and your service to Northwest Allen County Schools, and just wish you the very, very best in this next chapter of your life.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Okay, we'll move on to item number 10, Curriculum Instruction and Technology with Dr. Toller.
Yeah, thank you, Vice President Schlotter. We have several professional learning and training activities up for approval this evening. We have several acronyms in here as well or initials. So just to clarify a few things, the HECC Conference stands for Hoosier Education Computer Coordinators Conference. That's something that several of our technology team go to every year. It's a great conference for reviewing policy and practices around how our technology supports education, and so that's always a valuable use of time. Also, we have a team that is requesting to attend the ISNA State Conference. That's Indiana School Nutrition Association Conference. Actually, a few of those people are here tonight, being recognized at the beginning, and it is recommended that the professional learning and training activities be approved as presented.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Vote.
Is there a way that, we have a new packet and a new system up here that we're all struggling with, at least I know I am, I'll speak for myself, I guess, and this also for the public. Can we get links in the public side and as well as our side for the public to see what conferences our teachers are going to and what our administrators are going to so they see? Is that easily done? I don't know if it is or if it isn't, but that way we can click on it, hit it and go, okay, this is what we're doing. I got to search, and sometimes the acronym alphabet is a little challenging to make sure I'm going the right one, so.
Yeah, we can certainly take a look at that. There might be a few things, like I'm looking at Mrs. Howzer's attending some IASBO training and stuff, there's likely not going to be a link to that, but we can certainly look at that.
The ones where it's obviously there, that's all, man.
Sure.
Be great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll go to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And then secondly, this evening, I'm thrilled to share with the board, you should each have a book at your spot this evening. Hometown Heroes Book, those were donated to us by Carol Cooper. My understanding is Carol is not originally from Hunter Town, but she now lives in Hunter Town, and after driving through on a regular basis and seeing the banners around town, she was interested in the stories behind those people. And so I think in partnership with the Hunter Town Historical Society, I don't know if I have that title correct or not, but working with several Hunter Town residents, she's gotten a lot of background information and worked with families and created this book, which recognizes our local history and the contributions of several of our local community members in terms of their military service and first responders. Carol has actually donated 20 copies of these books to our school libraries, as well as a copy for each board member and for Mr. Barker as our superintendent. And so actually Terry Uckman actually brought this to me. Terry's the one that's been working with Carol on this, and so I wanted to share that with the board this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Toller. We'll move on to the business report with Mr. Basham.
Thank you. Several items tonight. Up first, I do have the Resolution to Adopt the 2026 Capital Projects Plan. Again, this was presented at the last board, actually the last two board meetings, but most recently on September 22nd. And I do recommend the Resolution to Adopt the 2026 Capital Projects Plan be approved as presented.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Up next, I do have the Bus Replacement Plan. Again, the same concept here. This was presented at the last two board meetings. Most recently, we had our hearing on September 22nd, and I do recommend the Resolution to Adopt the 2026 Bus Replacement Plan be approved as presented.
I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments of the board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Up next, I do have the Resolution for the 2026 Budget Adoption, the appropriation and tax rates. Just as a reminder for this, if you look at the actual form, the tax rates are at the absolute maximums. What happens with that is once we settle, and for example, we dis sold the GEO bonds, they'll finalize that payment and then drop that back down. So they will adjust really the cash balance that we have in our debt service fund. The target rate for that is still .8797. So while it does not read that, you do have to put the absolute maximum, and then they will adjust that back down. So I do recommend the 2026 Budget Resolution for Appropriations and Tax Rates, Budget Form Four, be approved as presented.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. And up next, the Resolution for the Budget Reduction. Again, we create the budget well before it actually comes into play. So we're looking at 2026 budget, which again, as we've talked about several times, that is part of '26 and actually part of 2027. And so what this resolution allows us to do is look at those appropriations, and if something has changed or adjusted over the course of the year, we're able to make that adjustment within the budget. So this is essentially, again, taking from one area and going, actually, we needed more here and less there. So it allows me, actually, the authority, to make that adjustment inside of the budget, not increasing or lowering per se, just making sure that things are appropriated correctly. So I do recommend the Resolution authorizing the Chief Financial Officer to reduce the July 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025 appropriations for the 2026 budget be approved as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments of the board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. So while that wraps up the '26 budgets, very quickly, I'm turning around and asking for permission to purchase 2026 buses, and for good reason. Typically, we would not do that this quickly, but Natalie Hoffman, our Transportation Director, and Troy Bierman, our head mechanic in that department, just done a great job of vetting out what is coming and happening, and they learned that there's going to be some price increases. And actually, it still would have been within our budget on the price increases, but before then, we were able to, if approved tonight, go ahead and lock into prices right now and get into the queue, which is also of benefit for us to get our buses timely. So this is actually, if we approve this tonight, we'll be saving around $100,000 off of what we had planned to spend. So definitely great news in doing so. So I do recommend that the bus purchases for 2026 be approved as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments of the board? I just wanted to thank Mrs. Hoffman and Mr. Bierman and yourself, Mr. Basham, when I was reading the agenda and saw the savings of $100,000 just to do something in a timely manner and to be able to have those more likely on time, I just really value that intentionality.
Thank you.
We'll go to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Up next, I do have an additional appropriation resolution for the GEO Bond 2025. We did actually go out to the market this past Tuesday, a week ago, excuse me, just past last week, Tuesday, and had a very successful sale. We're really happy about what happened considering the fluctuation of the market lately. And in this resolution, the reason why we had the hearing is now that we've sold the bonds, we need to actually be approved to appropriate them and now spend them. So I do recommend the additional appropriation resolution, GEO Bond 2025, be approved as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments of the board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Up next, I do have a Secondary Schools Pepsi contract. In the past, this has been a long, drawn-out process, and really, things have just not changed in that world very much over the last few years. There's not a lot of perks, so to speak, of making a change or transition. In fact, the making a change is, would be quite intrusive with all of the cooler signage that goes along with these items. So I commend Dan Ginder for really leading the effort from our Carroll High School Athletic Department, but he did work with our other middle school folks who were involved in athletics, and there really wasn't benefit to bring elementary into this. There are so few things there that weren't perks, so allowing them to still have some flexibility with what they do. But for our current schools, this was really just kind of locking in some prices and a few yearly free items, so to speak, that you get, and allowing to maintain the sales that they currently have. So again, I do recommend the next Secondary Schools Agreement with Pepsi be approved as presented.
I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Up next, I do have our agreement with Baker Tilly to continue to be the municipal advisor, and this was for our GEO Bond 2025 and actually continuing on the lease 2026. As you know, they've been a great partner for us throughout all of these issues that we've had the last several years, and I continue to partner with them, and they're very responsive and quick to help us. So I do appreciate the support that they provide, and also the rates for this are the exact same, this is basically the exact same agreement that we've had the last two years, just with the title of the issuance changed. So appreciate them maintaining that cost for us as well. So I do recommend the Municipal Advisory and Related Services with Baker Tilly for the GEO Bonds 2025 and Lease Rental Bonds '26 be approved as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, and up next, I do have Carroll High School Classroom Furniture. This is for the interior room component, sticking with the concept that we've had where we're doing the special exemption. You can see through the documents that, again, considerable savings by going through this process. Appreciate the work that Pulver Cove continues to do to go out and work directly with some providers to get us that additional discount. We are getting close to wrapping up furniture purchases for the high school. This is kind of the last big swing. There'll be a few ancillary pieces that we'll probably have to bring back, but this is really the last big bulk on that project because, believe it or not, that one's really wrapping up. Dr. Bidding and I just looked, and we've got, I think, some, pretty close to May, we're going to be pretty wrapped up there. So again, I do recommend the special exemption purchase for the Carroll High School Interior Room Furniture from Pulver Cove be approved as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I hesitated to add this in since I had so many items tonight, but I did want to provide a quick update from American Fidelity. I brought up that we had transitioned to them to support kind of some ancillary benefits that our staff can choose to provide, but there also are some great benefits for the district as well. But you can see here, I listed, these are some of the things that we offered, and we had just massive increases. We did not offer, for example, a cancer plan in the past. There were some components of a previous plan that had that, but very clear that this was something that employees wanted to enroll in, and some of the other types that we had still had quite a few enrollments. So that was a component of another one, and we still had increase. So you can see that this was a great educational thing for our staff to actually know what was available, and that was the big charge of the group working on this, is making sure employees even knew what options that they had. And so very excited that they were able to provide that update. I was hoping that they would have one more number for me, and they weren't able to quite finalize it yet because they're still wrapping things up. But another big increase that we had here were pre-tax items that come out, and that's actually a savings to the district. I think that we probably had an increase of, again, around over $100,000 because we had so many more people enroll in those pre-tax things. So that's a huge thing for us and huge for the employees. So truly a win-win, and just appreciate the work that American Fidelity did in year one. I wasn't expecting to see such great results, but this was exciting for our people and for the district. So just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you, Mr. Basham, for all your items tonight. We appreciate that. We'll move on to item 12, Operations and Safety with Dr. Bidding.
Thank you. I'd like to just to spend a brief moment here to talk about the two projects we have in design phase while Mr. Dale's pulling up some drone footage of the new middle school. Transportation Center, tomorrow is one of our last big design meetings. We're really to the point where that is in the, remember, we talked about the three phases, that third phase, construction document phase. We're going to be going out for bid for the Transportation Center here at the end of the month. So tomorrow's design meeting really is a one, kind of a once-over, one more time through, looking at the details, making some final decisions before we really kind of finalize those construction documents to, again, by the time we have our next board meeting, it'll be to the point where we'll be getting ready for bid. And so just thankful for partnerships we have. Barton Co., FCI have done a great job through this design process. Look forward to a pretty in-depth meeting tomorrow to go through everything, but it's been a great process, great design process for the Transportation Center, and look forward to kind of wrapping up the design phase into the bid phase here in the month of November. As far as the Career Center goes, we are basically kind of transitioning from Phase Two, the DD Set, the Design Development Set, into that construction document phase. We had a great meeting two weeks ago where we talked about, again, we kind of did, WIGANT did their budget estimate of where we are at with the design, and then we had a very, very in-depth meeting with all of the partners, whether it was the engineer teams, the architectural teams, WIGANT with CMC, and us as the owners, to really kind of, okay, let's talk about some value engineering. Where can we gain some things? Because at the end of the day, and the thing I truly appreciate about the group of people at that table, we understand the most important aspect to keep are those 21 programs we're trying to serve kids for. And so we had, you know, we looked at every possible thing to try to make sure within budgetary items, we can do the best we can for the kids, but maintaining the integrity of those 21 programs. So excited to see this go into Phase Three as we go into the construction document phase, where we really start fine-tuning some things down to, I know this week, Mr. Dale's going to be a part of this. We're going to talk about technology, door hardware. I know for some people, it's like, oh, my goodness, but that's kind of the level of detail we'll move into for Phase Three of the design phase with the CT building. So again, very excited about the group of people we are fortunate to work with. As far as the current projects go, Mr. Basham referenced the high school. We talked in depth about that at the last board meeting. Those renovation spaces are flying right along, very excited about what they're doing at the high school. And then excited to show you the drone footage here for Willow Creek. This is about a week, week and a half old, and I know you had the opportunity to visit there today, and so it's even changed since then. But I will point out, as you're looking through here, one of the spaces I think will pop in the video is the band room that floor is in. I love it. It's just got some nice touches to it, and so just some really neat spaces as we play the footage here. That's a sixth-grade multi-purpose room with some bleachers in it. That's one of our project-based rooms. Again, there's the band room with the new floor in it. This is the choir room. That's a career class we have. The Hatch Learning Center, excited to see the bookshelves in there. That space will be taken shape. There's our cafeteria. There's our cafeteria. And again, just excited to see the site, you know, a week, a week later.
This is the quickest way to clear out stuff.
We just get rid of that. A week later, there's grass on the football field, you guys saw that today. I mean, so the, the seeding and the site work they've done has been amazing. So again, just really appreciate all the efforts they've done. My next item, I'm gonna recognize the, in honor of the postseason baseball that's going on, I'm gonna say, what I'm about to do is, I'm gonna be like a pitcher talking about a no-hitter in the middle of the game, but I'm still gonna do it. And I know everybody's gonna, you know, shake their head on that, but I want to honor our Transportation Department. They, they, the amount of work that they put in to get students back and forth every day, goes unnoticed until something's wrong. And so, you know, we've got seventy-three bus drivers that, that get up early, early in the morning, and, and they're the first people that, that get to see our students in the morning. And they're the last people to get to see them at the end of the day. And, and Natalie and Greg at Transportation, they really, their passion and care for that department is, is unlike anything I've seen. And then they truly care about wanting that department to be the best. And Natalie and I have talked, they have to be a hundred percent, they, they can't be ninety-nine percent, they have to be a hundred percent on a daily basis. And so at the beginning of the summer, we had twelve openings, and, and we talk about drivers and driver shortage and things like that. They've worked so hard over the summer to fill ten of those twelve spots. And so we still have two openings left, but we have three people in training right now. And so we are in a great space to have a, a full driving staff. And I would like to say, and this is the part of the no-hitter that, I'm gonna knock on, knock on the wood here. If you look, first quarter's wrapped up, right? We're sort of one quarter into the school year. So as of October sixth of 2024, we had run one hundred and thirty-eight late routes. And, and I know everybody hates the late routes, but if you talk to Natalie, she was not gonna cancel a route. She was determined if, and, and that, those late routes meant, drivers were doubling back, they would drop students and go back and double. So we had committed drivers to make it happen. I know it was unfortunate, but we had a hundred and thirty-eight late routes in the first quarter last year. This year, we've only had twenty-six. And so, and that's a credit and a testament to Natalie and Greg and the entire transportation team and all of those dedicated drivers. And I, and I, and I know somebody's gonna hear this and we're gonna have a late route Friday, because it's the Friday before fall break, and they're gonna say, whoa, it, I'm telling you, those guys are crushing it, they're doing a great job. But more importantly, their care and commitment to try to do the very best, again, goes unnoticed until something's wrong. And so I just want to take that time as we wrap up the first quarter to truly just compliment and appreciate all the work that's going on with our drivers and that transportation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bidding. We'll move on to closing items. Do we have any board comments tonight?
I do. I'd like to thank Mr. Barker for organizing our tours today. I also like to thank Ill River, Aspen Meadow and Maple Creek for opening their doors, allowing the board to visit the schools and see all the amazing opportunities being offered to our students.
Okay, well, there were some very good public comments today. There were some very good ideas, the growth quotient, TIFs and nonprofits, you know, those are ideas that I've discussed with our state legislatures, legislators on a regular basis. And unfortunately, for us, we are a small drip in the state of Indiana. And so for us to get the momentum, it's gonna take more than us just talking, it's gonna have to take more state power than what we have here local legislatively wise. But those ideas are great. So I would challenge this board and the administration that if we are successful in finding ways for the increase in our operations from the state in some way, shape or form, whether it's through the growth quotient or TIF or, or the nonprofits, that we do reduce that referendum to lessen that burden on the taxpayer, because none of us wanna, wanna increase the taxes. I can tell you that, I don't. But I do look at what we have talked about and what we, this community's talked about, and it's, it's about a CTE facility, it's about making sure our teachers are paid well, and that's what we are doing with those funds. So I hope that folks get educated on them and, and to the comments that were made today, I wholeheartedly support those, and if we can get those done, we'll work our best here to reduce that operating referendum.
I have a couple. I, I want to state publicly what an honor it is to serve with our leadership. From Superintendent Barker to his cabinet, they serve with character and integrity. They work hard to make sure that our community has the facts and are able to make decisions based upon that in times like our referendum. And it is genuinely and truly an honor to serve with leadership like that. It's also humbling to serve, we heard some comments tonight from staff, whether they're in our food service department, transportation, our school nurses, our SROs. For so long, we've had people within our community serving our children and doing that in generous ways. And when I look at our peers, Superintendent Barker, thank you for your presentation tonight. It's hard for me as a board member to look at peer districts, recognizing that what we have per student is literally less than half of what our peer districts do. And we're trying to do what we do with excellence day in and day out. I'd like to echo the comments of Mrs. Shafie, getting to see firsthand today what those excellent things are every single day within our school buildings was a gift. And I'd like to thank Mr. Zern with Ill River and the Ill River Elementary, Mrs. Lockmueller at Aspen Meadow and her school there, Mr. Jones at Maple Creek Middle School, and Dr. Jane Bidding, and Noah from Wigan with the tour of Willow Creek Middle School, as well as Superintendent Barker and our leadership for making that possible to our board. It was honestly a gift to get to see it firsthand today, so I want to say thank you for that. I'd like to congratulate our Charger Pride. My understanding is they swept the awards at the Homestead Competition this past weekend and were grand champions over the entire contest. And then I'd like to lastly wish everyone a very refreshing and safe fall break. We'll move on to Superintendent Comments.
Thank you, just have a couple of comments. Number one, we have received, well, the traffic study is completed for the CTE facility and the different intersections around Carroll High School. So we'll be working to get an understanding with the team that put that traffic study together. And then after that, we'll be sending out letters to the residents of Long Baird Road again, to ask them for a meeting probably sometime the week of October twentieth. So we'll report more out about that. Also, Mrs. Jameson, I did check, and thankfully, Mrs. Lockmueller was able to get back to me. She did say we have some related arts courses at a certain grade level that are at that thirty per class.
Okay, I was just worried I misunderstood, okay, I just.
So she, we are there, so, and again, that can, that can be helped through the operating referendum by adding the related arts classes into, into all of the schools, so.
In the STEM programs, that would help also alleviate some of that, just? No? Okay, okay.
It would, it would provide a broader experience for the students. Right now, they're, yeah, that's all I could say for right now. Yeah. So those are the only comments I have tonight, thank you.
Our next regular board meeting is currently scheduled for October the twenty-seventh at the Ronald D. Fugger Boardroom in the Administration Center. It's recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the adjournment of this meeting.
Move for approval?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you for coming to the board meeting this evening.